I'd like to call to order the May 15, 2012, meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. I would invite you to stand with us as we have a group from Bowling Green Christian Academy who will be providing both our pledge of allegiance and providing invocation. Kyle Sealy, a seventh grader, will be leading in the invocation and he'll be joined in the pledge by two sixth graders, Ryan Bilbrey and Kennedy Campbell. So, Mr. Sealy, thank you for being here.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for all the blessings you have given us and thank you for always being there for us through the thick and the thin. We come to you this evening to ask you to be with our city council as they conduct the business of Bowling Green. Help them make decisions that would be according to your will and that will honor you. We ask that you help the commissioners while at their work in all of us in our everyday lives, keep our focus on you. We pray these things in your heavenly name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kyle Sealy, Ryan Bilbrey, and Kennedy Campbell, for helping us out tonight.
Mayor Wilkinson.
Yes, sir.
That is one of the best presentations I believe I've heard in quite some time.
They get some practice. All right, Ms. Sheller, please call a roll.
Commissioner Hill, here. Commissioner Nash.
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip.
Here.
Commissioner Denny.
Here.
Mayor Wilkinson.
Here.
You okay?
I'm about to die.
Be a long night if that would hurt you.
Okay, Mr. DeFebo, do we have any awards or recognitions tonight?
None, Mayor, thank you.
I think I see Mr. Lackey in the audience. Do you have something for us, Ray?
Yes, sir.
I have two awards this evening. As I remind you, last month, the May Award was unable to be here because of conflicts with children and different things. So, tonight I have an award. Our May Residential Award is 720 Cottonwood Drive, Allison and Roddy Millet. Here is a before photo, an after photo, a before photo, an after photo, a before photo, an after photo. This evening I have Allison and Roddy Millet and their sons Ross, who is nine, and Owen, who is five. If they could come for it, please.
Thanks for this award, for the opportunity to, I guess, encourage people around Bowling Green to improve their properties, and we sure have had a good time doing it.
Thank you very much. That's the whole purpose of Operation Pride, to help to make that generate throughout the community. Thanks again.
Thank you. We'll be passing it on.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next award that we have this evening, the owners are not present, it's for 213 Raglin Way, Michael and Kathleen Lightfoot. I tried to offer them the same thing, to allow them to come next month, but they said that they're doing things tonight with kids and family, and then next month he's going to be on second shift. So, I'm going to go ahead and do this, and we'll present the award at their house to them. 213 Raglin Way. This is a before photo. As you can see, he cut out some old trees and put in some shrubs. Amazing when you start looking around the side of the yard what he did. I did not have any other old photos to compare it with. He didn't have any, we didn't have any on the website. But they've done an amazing job with this house, too, and I'd like to thank them.
Is that the house, Ray, that's right at the corner of Raglin and Way?
It is right on the corner of Raglin and Way. It sure is. The last thing I have for you, Mayor and Commissioners, is that I have someone with me tonight, and they actually prepared the presentation. They took the photographs, they prepared the PowerPoint presentations, and in the event, as you all know, I'm getting ready to try and slack off a little bit, but in the event that I'm not going to be here, I've had Miranda Clements and even Karen Foley helped. But tonight I've got Paul Sexton. I think you all know Paul very well. He was with the police force here for fifteen and a half years. He is now working with code enforcement and has agreed to learn other diverse parts of Operation Pride's jobs so that he can help us in the event that we need that assistance. Thank you for everything this evening, and appreciate it.
Thank you, Ray, we appreciate it. And waving another announcement, I've been asked to bring a couple of things to attention to the community. Wednesday, tomorrow, May 16, is Warren County Wednesday. It's the Bowling Green Hot Rods. Tickets are only $3 if you want to go and fill up the stadium. And then Thursday, May 17, Tim Lee asked me to bring your attention that the SHPO, and I can't remember what those letters stand for, State Historic Preservation Organization, is helping to sponsor From Dream to Reality, A Roadmap to Rehabilitation. It'll take place all day Thursday at 601 State Street, and it'll be featuring Holly Whittiman of AU Associates on how to repurpose old buildings and what the benefit it will be to the community. Mr. DeFebo, do you have any comments?
Yeah, Mayor, there'll be a need for an executive session. Katie will read the reasons.
Pursuant to KRS 62810B, "For deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property by the city, but only when publicity would likely affect the value of the specific piece of property to be acquired for public use or sold by the city." And KRS 62810G, "Discussions between the city and a representative of a business entity and discussions concerning a specific proposal of open discussions would jeopardize the siting, retention, expansion, or upgrading of the business."
Samute.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Nash. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Anything else, Mr. DeFebo?
No, Mayor.
Okay, the only other thing, if there's anyone in the audience that appeared for the purpose of being involved in the first reading of a rezoning on Louisville Road, that has been set off to the next meeting due to the fact that it was, has not yet been authenticated by Planning and Zoning Commission. They have to approve their minutes for us to consider those, and that's the only reason why it's set over. Okay, next is approval of the minutes from the May 1st meeting. Motion by Hill. Second by Nash.
Second.
Oh, favorably, please say aye. Or, excuse me, call a roll. I got distracted, I came in with a town.
All right, Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Okay, this is the time of the meeting where we have a moment for public comments. If anyone would like to make a comment on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, we invite them to come up to the microphone at this time. If you do, please raise your hand so I can wait for you.
Mayor, we had a couple people come in late, just want to make sure they weren't here for the rezoning case.
Could we make the announcement one more time?
One more time, just to make sure everybody understands that the rezoning issue on Louisville Road has been postponed to the next meeting because Planning and Zoning has not yet authenticated their minutes, and we can't consider it until they do. Anyone else?
Sorry.
No problem. Thank you. All right. First item on the agenda is second reading of Ordinance 2012, number 12.
Ordinance Res zoning Real Estate. Ordinance Res zoning a tract of land containing 8.48 acres from HB Highway Business and LI Light Industrial to LI Light Industrial located on Dishman Lane presently owned by Tommy Lloyd.
Samute.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Denny. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes. Second reading of Ordinance 2012, number 13.
Ordinance Res zoning Real Estate. Ordinance Res zoning a tract of land containing 5.03 acres from RM4 multifamily residential to PUD Planned Unit Development located at 1140 Kentucky Street presently owned by Columns LLC.
Samute.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Nash. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes. Second reading of Ordinance 2012, 14.
Ordinance Res zoning Real Estate. Ordinance Res zoning a tract of land containing 0.19 acre from HB Highway Business to RM4 multifamily residential located at 1516 Kenton Street presently owned by LR Property Management LLC.
Samute.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Hill. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012, 77.
Municipal Order approving the reappointment of David W. McKillop and appointment of Tony Whitty to the Bowling Green Audit Committee.
Samute.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Waltrip. I just want to thank Mr. McKillop for agreeing to continue. Tony Whitty's taking the place of Jim Martins. You may have seen an article in the paper where he was one of the last remaining original member of the Audit Committee. I want to thank him for the good hard work that he's done over the period of time. Any other discussion? Please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012, 78.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of James L. Napper to the position of Code Enforcement Inspector in the Neighborhood and Community Services Department.
Samute.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFebo.
On April 17, we appointed Kemble Johnson to this position. He started work for the city on April 30, and evidently he was made an offer he could not refuse by the county and went back to work for the county. We turned to the next applicant, which was James Napper, who was a close second in the selection process. He's agreed to serve for us, and I think we all know him. James was a police officer for 15 years and has a bachelor's degree and is the type of candidate that would serve us well in this position. So, he could not be here tonight, but we recommend him wholeheartedly.
Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012, number 79.
Municipal Order authorizing the continuation of a contract with A General Touch LLC of Louisville, Kentucky for janitorial services for the Public Works Department Facilities Management Division in the amount of $468,787.32 for three additional years.
Samute.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Waltrip and Mr. DeFebo.
As the commission knows, we use, we privately contract janitorial services for most city buildings. We currently use General Touch for a number of those buildings. Under our procurement, we have an opportunity to increase the number of years we have with this particular contractor, and it's Jeff's and Jackie Edwards' recommendation that we extend the contract three more years. We're happy with the service and find value in it. We looked at your request a number of years ago whether we could do this ourselves privately, and the answer was no, so we recommend the extension. Jeff Lashley is here, if you have any questions.
Comment or two questions? Please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012, 80.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 201238 for golf cart replacement from Cunningham Golf Cart Company Incorporated of Louisville, Kentucky in the net amount of $332,200.
Samute.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFebo.
We went out to bid for new golf carts for all the golf courses, considering all the changes that are taking place within the golf division and our opportunity to purview, review operations and efficiencies, we decided it'd be appropriate to put new golf carts at Paul Walker and Crosswinds and to take the best carts and put those at Riverview. Bob has talked to the bidder, who was the low bidder, and he's agreed to do this, and we think it's overall a good deal all around. Bob is here, if you have any questions about the carts or why we're picking Cunningham vis a vis another.
Any discussion? Ms. Hill?
It's my understanding this bid is for 100...
Do me a favor and speak up, because I don't hear well, though. It's not you, it's me.
Is this better?
Yeah.
Okay, it's my understanding the bid is for 108 carts, golf carts, to be at two courses, Crosswinds and Covington or Paul Walker. How many carts can be on the course at one time?
All of them, basically. We have a lot of outings that we do at the golf courses that'll have 144 players outings, which is 72 golf carts. Same thing at Paul Walker, we'll have usually 64 to 72 players outings, and then that'll take all the golf carts. In fact, a lot of times, like for instance, Boys and Girls Club Tournament, there's a lot of other large ones that volunteers need carts and et cetera, so a lot of times we even go over to Paul Walker and borrow carts from there for a special event when we need more than the 72.
So, I was just doing some calculation. I was thinking that if we had three carts per hole, because I thought if we got any more, it's going to be backup, and our golfers are not going to be happy that they have to wait to play golf. Three carts per hole at each course would be a total of 81 carts. It concerns me, she probably knew it would, that we're, with unfortunately the bad publicity our golf program has received over the last several months, that we're going to invest this much money into new golf carts. I just can't see why we need 108 for two courses.
Go ahead.
Could I speak to this here, or you want him to? Okay, I'll let you go first.
Thirty-six at Paul Walker is what we've had, and we've had 72 at Crosswinds ever since day one. And basically, you can get two foursomes on each hole when you play, so two foursomes would be four carts on each hole at the maximum you'd have. So, that's what we've used in the past, that's what seems to work for us.
The only other thing I would add is after tournaments, if we have a full, we have a full course of players that are out there, and that tournament wraps up, and we have new players that are coming in after a tournament to play, if all the carts have gone out, then we don't have more carts to rent to the customers that are coming in after a tournament, depending on how much use those carts get during the amount of time that they're used during the tournament.
The golf carts we've had, the ones at Paul Walker are 2003 models, so now they're making the 2013 model, so those carts are 10 years old. The ones at Walk at Crosswinds are 2004. That puts them at about nine years old. Most people turn their golf carts over in four or five years, so we've been able to get some extra miles out of these carts by taking good care of them.
How many, I see you're taking your best in sending to Hobson Grove or Riverview. How many, are you keeping any old carts at these two facilities?
Your question was how many carts are we taking to Riverview Golf Course?
No, I saw that, but are we keeping any old carts at, all of them would be brand new.
All of them, except for taking 36 of the best ones at Crosswinds and putting those at Riverview.
So, we would have all brand new carts at Crosswinds and at Paul Walker.
And then we'd have nine-year-old ones at Riverview.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm having a little difficulty with this, too. Bob, I don't have any more questions. I just, when we discarded the opportunity to lease the golf courses, we chose to examine only the lease and not the expense side of the equation in that evaluation, and this will continue to add to the cost of our golf facility without a business plan to address that deficit. So, at this point, I'm feeling it premature to move forward with this bid, because I know we're going to expend $300,000 to $500,000 on the golf courses and operational expenses, and now this is going to add 332 in a capital improvement project. And I'd rather see a longer-term plan on what we're going to do rather than just going to do what we've been doing, because I don't think anybody was satisfied with the amount of funds that were going. So, I'll be a no vote on that. Would be anybody else? Please call a roll.
Hill?
No.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
No. Municipal Order 2012, number 81.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 201221 for Center Street and Main Avenue signal improvements from Arrow Electric Company of Louisville, Kentucky in the amount of $112,442.30.
Samute.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFebo.
One of our public goals is to improve the signals in the downtown area. One of the intersections left to be done is Center Street and Main Avenue. Went out to bid for this. We had three bidders ranging from $134,000 to $112,000. We're here to recommend the low bidder, which is Arrow Electric. Jeff Lashley is here, if you have any questions about the bid.
Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012, number 82.
Municipal Order authorizing a change order to the contract with Scotty's Contracting and Stone LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky for fiscal year 2012, street overlay, bid number 201236, in the amount of $40,512.1. Samute.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Nash. Mr. DeFebo.
Last meeting, we presented to you a plan for paving for the coming year. We were short of liquid field money, as we told you we would do. Jeff went back into his budget and looked at all of his line items and found sufficient funds from past year's sidewalk, curb, and gutter work to be able to afford those four streets that we had to remove from the list. So, we're happy to report that we think we have enough money to do all four of those we weren't able to do.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand where the money was coming from.
It's coming from FY11 sidewalk, curb, and gutter money. Every year, we put money in for the replacement of existing sidewalks, curbs, and gutters. We did the work program, underspending, and now we're using underspending.
Underspending, okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Jeff, do you want to add to that, or you want Jeff to add to that?
No, I just want clarification. Anyone else? Please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012, 83.
Municipal Order authorizing a change order to the contract with AMEC and Environment and Infrastructure Incorporated of Nashville, Tennessee for the final design services for Butler County landfill improvements, bid number 201220, in the amount not to exceed $66,332.
Samute.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Nash. Mr. DeFebo.
As the commission may remember, we have a leachate problem at the Butler County landfill that we need to manage, that facility surcharges with during storms and other weather events, having leachate fill up. We want to present a management plan to deal with that on a long-term basis. One of the problems we have is we don't know how much leachate is produced in X amount of time, so any solution would be short-sighted. So, Matt Powell came to us and asked us to do a change order so that we could hire a company to establish the basic facts we need to provide a good solution. Matt's here, if you have any questions. Go ahead, Ms. Hill.
I just, would you remind our citizens why we would do anything for the Butler County landfill?
At one time, it's my understanding, this predates me, is that we were into the public garbage business, and we had a landfill. Once you have a landfill, you have a perpetual mandate to manage that according to the Environmental Protection Agency. One of the main issues you have is what's called leachate. What that means is that water or other, either from the ground or from the sky, fills up and mixes with the garbage underneath the ground, causing a foul liquid, so to speak, a leachate that needs to be managed. If you don't manage it, it's like a septic tank that goes bad. It comes to the surface. So, we have to manage this, and we're trying to do so responsibly.
The city's old landfill at Butler County housed for us. Is this funding going to be reimbursed by the state? Matt Powell's coming to the microphone. I don't know if you are familiar with the close relationship he has with the state regarding landfills. He's the landfill king.
I don't want you to overstate my case. We do often go to the state with our handout for the historic landfill program. They've been very gracious with us in landfill funding in the past. We have a standing memorandum of agreement for roughly $106,000 worth of design costs. This particular cost was unforeseen. I've submitted a request to the state that has not been approved. We're moving ahead regardless of who funds it. We need to move ahead, because without the results of this test, we can't move forward. So, we hope to be reimbursed for this, but I do not have a final answer for that yet. We have asked.
But the state is funding our, or is it on board thus far to fund the rest of it?
Yes, the rest of Project 2012-20 is fully funded.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. Are we still monitoring the landfill on Old Louisville Road?
Yes, sir. In short, there's a hitch in our giddy-up as to who exactly owns that property, who can transfer that property, and some several decades-old leases that we've been unable to completely resolve with the transportation cabinet, and it's merely a paperwork issue, but yes, we'll be hanging on to that one forever as well.
And I'll be hanging on to your freezing.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Appreciate the work you've done on it.
I believe we're ready for a vote. Please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012, 84.
Municipal Order approving the year-nine annual action plan of the consolidated plan for community development block grant entitlement funding and authorizing its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Samute.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Nash. Mr. DeFebo.
The city of Bowling Green is what is known as an entitlement community for community development block grants. We've been this way for about nine years. Every year, in order to receive this money from HUD, we have to go through a public hearing and essentially say to the community, what would you like for us to spend the money on, even though HUD limits it to three national objectives. So, we do that. We have a citizen committee that you appoint to help Brent allocate the money. We went through that public hearing process. We went through the committee review process, and tonight you have the recommendation to spend $496,000 for year nine for next year. I can go through the list if you would like it to be helpful, or however you want to proceed. Brent's here also, if you'd like a little show and tell from him.
I think we've had lists in the past, but there's... Yeah. Any discussion? I don't believe so.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2012-85.
Municipal Order accepting donation from John and Linda Kelly Family Charitable Foundation to expand the scope of service of Camp Happy Days.
So move.
Motion by Nash, second by Hill. Mr. Febow.
For the last five years, John and Linda Kelly of our community have made a gracious gift to our Park and Rec Department to help carry on the cost of Camp Happy Days for those individuals with special needs. Pursuant to our own protocol, anything over, I think, I believe 20,000, or maybe 20,000? 5,000, we need your approval. So John and Linda are giving us 21, so hopefully you'll accept it. Ernie's here, if you want to know how he's going to apply the money. But they've been doing a good job for the last five years with their money. We want to thank them, of course.
Hi, good evening. First, I just want to thank the Kelly family for their investment. And it's for the adult portion of Camp Happy Days, which are individuals 18 and over. And I'd like to recognize our staff, Brent Belcher, Christie Bishop, and Nikki DeFreeze, for offering a program conducive to a donation from the family. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Febow. Appreciate it. Any discussion? Please add our thanks to the Kelly family for helping us out there. Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
First reading of Ordinance 2012, number 15.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving Amendment Number Three to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year 2012.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Nash. Mr. Febow.
One of the responsibilities of city staff and the commission together is to manage the budget. We do this through watching our expenditures and also using a budget amendment process if transfers or appropriations are different than budget. Jeff's here tonight to ask you to amend the budget for the third time, possibly the final time. Maybe one more, Jeff? One more. So if you have any questions, Jeff can go over item by item, none of which requires new taxation or anything.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Next item is to remove from the table Ordinance Number 2012, number 11.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip. There's no discussion. Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
And now to have it off the table for consideration of the second reading of Ordinance 2012, number 11.
Ordinance related to WKU Gateway to Downtown Bowling Green Tiff Development Area. Ordinance approving amended and restated local participation agreement number three and amended and restated master development agreement number two related to the WKU Gateway to Downtown Bowling Green Development Area.
So move. Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Waltrip. We'll let you go first, if you don't care to. Mr. Lampfier, come right up.
I'll go in whatever order you wish for me to go. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. That's it. Technology's great when it works. We asked, when we were here last, for the opportunity to review the agreement, and that is what we have done. And I would like to just give you a brief review of what we have found. What I have done is taken, and let me first of all say, I corresponded with Mr. Harmon. I corresponded with Ms. Schaller's office. And they were very kind to promptly get me the documents that I requested. And we appreciate that very much. What I, I'll just tell you quite honestly, what I did is tried to take the agreement that is currently in effect, set it down on one side of the page, and compare it to the one that is before you tonight. And there are some differences between them. And that's what I want to point out to you. In the current agreement, and the way that I'm going to do this is just give you a brief overview, and then I'm going to show you pages from the documents. So you can see them.
Your intent is to challenge the entire master developer agreement?
Well, sir, I can tell you. I'll tell you the very end of my presentation, if you want. I'm going to ask you to either table this matter or to vote no. But...
Okay, but you're here representing DRA, is that correct?
I'm here on behalf of DRA, yes. And I'll explain why I say those things in my remarks.
We're going to ask that you do what you're doing right there, the 601 State comments, yes, sir.
Under the existing agreement, this is the agreement that you have right now, on page 18 of the June 2008 agreement. In Section Five, it describes the obligations of the developer. And on page 18, it's numerical paragraph eight. The master developer is to lease 601 State Street from DRA for 20 years. They're to pay a rental of $1,000 per year. And then they are to sublease back to DRA $40,000, for about 3,300 square feet, for approximately $40,000. And so DRA is leasing the property for 100... They're leasing the property to the developer for $100,000. Then they are leasing back space for their offices. They're paying 40, so they net $60,000. And the whole purpose of that agreement was to allow DRA to fund its operation.
David, excuse me. I'm not following you at all in the documents that I have.
Which one do you have in front of you?
Well, the one that's before us on page 18.
Well, no, it won't be there.
Okay.
I am showing you the agreement that you currently have. That's what I'm comparing.
Okay.
And I will show you the other sections in just a moment.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll show you pictures, or I'll show you copies of the pages I'm referring to here. In the current agreement, the master developer is obligated to fully renovate. That's the words in the agreement. 601 State Street, the estimated cost is $2 million. That was to come from private investment. There is no condition precedent for the issuance of what we read in the newspaper, Tiff bonds. In fact, that's just really a misnomer. There's no such thing as Tiff bonds. There are bonds that are repaid with the proceeds from the Tiff, but there's nothing special about that. So there's no condition precedent for the issuance of bonds in order to obligate the master developer to lease this property. Should have happened, should have happened years ago. In Exhibit G of that agreement, there's a development schedule. And it says that that project was to be completed on April 1st of 2009. That's what the agreement required. Also, in Exhibit G, and I'll show you this document in a moment, it says that the private investment is to be $2 million. The public investment is to be $0. Now, under the agreement that is before you, and Commissioner Hill, if you were to look on page 16 of the document that you have before you, you will see in Section Five, number five, that the master developer is to lease, and then some language, new language is inserted in the agreement that says, "or cause to be leased 601 State Street from DRA for 20 years with the same terms as under the other agreement." Essentially, what that additional, those five additional words do is allow the master developer to avoid its responsibility to lease the property that they're currently obligated to do. Also, that paragraph relieves the master developer from the obligation to renovate. Instead, it says that the Chapter 58 is going to renovate the property, which really means, well, and it also says the renovation will be paid with bond proceeds. When the Chapter 58 authority invests money, it's really public money because it requires the payment of tax dollars that are dedicated to the retirement of those bonds. It's not private investment. It's your nonprofit that is having to do it. Finally, on Exhibit G, which is the development schedule to the new document, it says there is no development start date or completion date. There's no timetable anymore under the agreement that is before you right now. Now, these are the pages from the agreements. I'm just going to show you that what I'm saying to you is in the documents. This is the current agreement, not the new one that's before you. This is the current agreement. This is from Section Five, Paragraph Eight, the obligations of the developer. It says page 16, but it's actually page 18 of that agreement. Here, I've enlarged it. Subject to the approval of DRA, and I'm not going to take the time to read the entire thing. And subject to mutual acceptance of terms and conditions, the obligation of the developer was to lease approximately 17,000 square feet of a building located at 601 State Street. The developer shall fully renovate the leased premises, including office space to be subleased by DRA. That's what the current agreement says. This is the proposed agreement. This is page 16 in the agreement that you have before you with this ordinance. And in Paragraph Five, it says, "subject to execution of an agreement with DRA and subject to the authority's ability to fund tenant improvements up to $2 million," "shall lease," referring to the developer, "shall lease or cause to be leased an approximate 17,000-square-foot building." There are a few other changes in that paragraph. These are the only ones that I'm pointing out to you. Exhibit F of the current agreement is part of the financing plan. And the financing plan specifically shows that there's to be a $2 million expenditure for the renovation of DRA offices. DRA is mentioned a number of times in these agreements. That's just one place. In Exhibit G, there is a development schedule. And it refers to public investment and private investment. And it says that the public investment for the DRA building is to be $0, and the private investment for the DRA building is $2 million. But that changes completely in the new agreement. In the proposed agreement, this is the, an identification of the projects that are to be funded by a financing plan. And I'll talk about that in a few moments. The list of projects to be funded from the financing plan, and you don't see DRA there anywhere because it's been left out. It's omitted. I don't know why. I don't know why, but it's omitted. In Exhibit G to the new agreement, there's a description of the capital investment schedule. And this is a long page, so it took me three slides to get it all on there for you. See over here, on this side over here, expected start and expected completion? These are projects that I guess are underway. But when you look at it, you don't see DRA anywhere because it's omitted. As you scoot down the page, you see these other projects. DRA is omitted. You scoot down the page, those that are under construction, and to the end of the page, DRA is omitted. That's what's happening in the new agreement. And that's why we object to it. Some other changes to the master development agreement. In the current agreement, in Section Five, under the developer's obligations, they are to provide sub-developer agreements that provide for private investment under Phase One and Phase Two. And if they don't perform...
Mr. Lampfier, if we've gone away from specifically to DRA, I need to bring us back into that.
I will, very quickly.
Well, I don't want to...
It is to be caused for termination.
We're not, if you have an issue with the master developer and their performance, that discussion needed to be taken to the Chapter 58, the Tiff organization. So let's limit our discussion to the DRA project.
Mr. Mayor, what I'm trying to point out to you is under the current agreement, you can specifically participate in that. It's not just the authority. It's not just the Chapter 58. But under the new agreement, there's no threat of termination if they don't perform. But I'll go on. There is a special contract that is an exhibit to the master development agreement. And it's called the Master Development Services and Compensation Agreement. Under that agreement, Section 3H, there is specific reference in there that the master developer will lease 601 State Street from DRA for 20 years. So the overall master development agreement mentions this particular project. And a side agreement, if you will, a specific agreement between the authority and the master developer specifically mentions that the master developer is to lease the property under these specific terms. Under Section 3K, they are to use their best efforts to build according to the development schedule, which may be amended by the city, county, authority, western, and the master developer. That is the schedule that would govern the timeline for the entire project, including the DRA project. Now, under the proposed agreement, the new Services and Compensation Agreement says that the master developer is to lease or cause to be lease 601 State Street from DRA for 20 years. And then it says, it eliminated these other requirements and simply said that they were to use, the master developer is to use its best efforts to build according to the development schedule, which may be amended by the authority and the master developer. So in other words, the city doesn't have a hand in setting the schedule any longer because it's given to the authority and the master developer in this subsequent agreement. In the current master development agreement, Section 10 is the financing plan. It describes the general terms of financing for this project. And written in all caps and bold, is what I call a firewall. You're familiar with it. It's the paragraph, it's the paragraph that says that the city will have no liability other than for its general revenue bonds.
See, that was printed before we did the general revenue bonds, which is the reason why I voted against those revenue bonds.
No, they're mentioned, well, there is, let me just say, just say this.
You're in a revision beyond...
Let me just say this. Under the new agreement, this is the proposed financing plan. It describes that financing is going to come from the issuance of bonds and other indebtedness according to Exhibit J, which may be amended by the authority, not city, but by the authority. And there's no firewall language. In other words, this is what the current agreement says. In all caps and bold, it is conspicuous in the contract. And there's no way that lawyers can make it more conspicuous than to do it this way. And it says that, except for general obligation bonds to be issued by the city, the bonds issued by the county shall not constitute a debt of the county or city or constitute a pledge of the full faith and credit of the city or county. And neither the city nor county shall have any obligation toward the payment of these bonds except for the pledge of incremental revenues and assessment revenues as provided for in this agreement. You or someone on your behalf insisted on that to insulate and protect the city from liability for debt other than as specifically set forth in those issued bonds. Now, under the new agreement, the proposed agreement, this is the financing plan. Issuance of bonds by the city, pardon me, by the county, issuance of general revenue bonds by the city, and other indebtedness incurred in accordance with the financing plan attached as Exhibit J, as it may be amended with approval of the authority, the parts of the project funded by these bonds shall be generally consistent with a specific program listing attached as Exhibit F. There's no firewall language. That great big paragraph in all caps and bold is gone from this agreement. That great big paragraph in all caps and bold is gone from this agreement. And the main change is when it says, "other indebtedness incurred in accordance with the financing plan attached as Exhibit J." What is that other indebtedness? This is the financing plan, and it impacts my client. Their general revenue bonds.
Yeah, let's go specifically to your client. I don't understand why this is necessary to...
Well, Your Honor, I respectfully submit that it's important to the decision that you make. Maybe you've read it already. Maybe you have. But what I intend to show to you is that there are, the general revenue bonds, we know that the city is already liable for that. Is it going to be liable for this $2 million from PBI Bank, from the Sky PAC, $33 million in New Market Tax Credits, whatever that is?
Okay, Mr. Lanfer, those are not issues that we're going to just talk about with the DRA issue. Our counsel will take care of this on that program.
Does it concern this commission? Does it concern this commission on whether it approves and votes yes for this contract?
We're here to talk about the DRA issue. That's the reason why we tabled it.
And I understand that. I understand that.
Specifically the DRA, please, sir.
Okay. Well, I can't change this. I'll just skip through it. I can't change these slides. But I don't know what the other indebtedness is. So this is what DRA asks. First of all, that you table this ordinance. Find out why it's necessary to relieve the master developer of contractual obligations to procure private investment and development. Why is that necessary? Not just to let them go, but to drive them away. And I mean to drive the car that escorts them away. Why let them out of obligations like that? Number two, find out why someone wants the city to abdicate its ability to impose a development schedule. Because under this new contract, there's not one that the city controls. It's the way it appears to me. Find out why there's no firewall to protect the full faith and credit of the city from liability for the financing plan. Allow DRA to negotiate with all interested parties to resolve our differences for the best interests of the community. Or simply vote no and go back to the drawing board. DRA is extremely interested in downtown development. It's as interested as anyone in this community. The DRA started the discussion and planning about downtown development with a master plan that was prepared and submitted to the city in 2002. And in that master plan, that master plan recommended the creation of a TIP district that is being done right now. For some reason, unbeknownst, suspected but unbeknownst to my client, there is an effort to simply cut it out from development. And even from the successful development of its own property. There was a plan in place in the June 2008 contract, and the developer did not comply with it. And now, there is before you a contract that absolutely opens the gate and allows the master developer to walk away from those obligations and has them to be undertaken by the Chapter 58 authority in part, in part, but not really. The development of 601 State Street, we believe, is an important cog in the overall development of the downtown area. And frankly, I suspect that this commission agrees with that. So it is, it leaves us wondering why a financing plan that was originally designed to make that come to pass is being thwarted now. So, as I say, Your Honor, members of the board, respectfully, we ask you to either table this measure and allow additional time for whatever differences exists that we need to solve in order to, for everyone to move forward, including the DRA. We ask you to allow that to happen. Or to simply decide that you need to look into some of the other things that I believe are, that you'll find in this contract. And I've tried to point some of them out to you this evening.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Lanfer. Appreciate this very much. You're given. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Lanfer?
Your Honor, may I just ask one question? I'm a little confused, Mr. Lanfer. I was back here during the days of the start of DRA and the others. Is it DRA's argument with the Chapter 58 group, regardless of what the City of Bowling Green or the City Commission does? If there's disagreement, then doesn't DRA have the right to go to the courts, to the court, for them to make the decision as to whether or not these two documents that we have been shown are legal and in place? I'm asking a dumb layman's question because I don't know.
Well, I would say, I would say this. I think that DRA does have a legal option. That's not what it would, and I won't speak for Mr. Murphy or the board, but I respectfully believe that DRA has a legal option. But for the life of me, I don't understand how that helps anybody. I don't understand how it helps this commission. I don't understand how it helps the project if it is possible for reasonable people to sit down and talk before they get into a slugfest. But that doesn't, it doesn't always happen that way. But just the short answer to your question is, yes, I believe there is a legal option. But I want to be, I want to say this. I don't want to suggest that DRA is trying to pick a fight with Chapter 58. We're not trying to do that. Not trying to pick a fight with the City of Bowling Green or the other parties to this agreement. That is not our goal. Our goal is to try to be permitted to scoot up to the table and participate in some discussions that would allow DRA to continue the mission that it was given years ago. And this commission helped it to do that by giving it the property with a goal, the property at 601 State Street, with the goal that it would become self-sufficient. That's what the original goal was. And it's a laudable goal, I will say. I think it's a laudable goal. But at the end of the day, at the end of the day, what we have here is an agreement to which there are four parties, the city, the county, the authority, and the master developer. And if there is an issue, a legal issue, the city can't just go and tap just one party on the shoulder and say, "We have an issue with you." The issue arises by virtue of the rights that we believe this contract and the master developer's services and compensation contract assigns to the Downtown Redevelopment Association. We believe it's a third-party beneficiary of those things. We say that, given research that we've done, and that you may hear lawyers tonight say that there's a disagreement about that. I don't know whether they will or whether they won't. I won't be surprised. But as you know, when lawyers disagree, they resolve their differences with judges. And that's not what we wish or hope to do. That's not what we believe serves everyone's interest. When we were here before, I asked, for quite honestly, a different reason, that this matter be tabled until June the 5th. And the reason was because Mr. Baydoun, who has been involved in this as well, was unable to be here. I don't ask you to put it off until June the 5th now for that reason because I've said what I came to say, and I'm happy to try to answer whatever questions, and you've been very kind to hear me. But I ask you to table it to June the 5th, until June the 5th, to give the important parties on whom you will rely to work out a resolution to the issues that cause us differences right now. If you give us that time to do that, I trust, I can't guarantee, but I trust that reasonable people are going to make a serious and sincere effort to accomplish it, particularly if this commission used its bully pulpit to insist that it be done.
Have a question, Mr. Danning?
Let's say it's Mr. City Attorney. Do I want to say anything? The only thing I can say right now, and I'm a part of it, a couple, because a couple other attorneys here as well, representing the other parties. David's right, obviously, the city is a party to this agreement, but the obligations that he is talking about is under the obligations of the authority. And I think he's also right on one point. He and I will probably do disagree on the third-party beneficiary. I think the contract's clear that there are no third-party beneficiaries to this agreement. They're not a party. DRA is not a party to the agreement. There's language in here that says there's no third-party intended beneficiaries of this agreement. You know, if, hopefully, you're right, we'll never get to court, have to worry about it. But I disagree with the fact that there are a third-party beneficiary of the agreement. But probably, I know the master developer is here tonight, represented by counsel. DRA is here, the authority is here tonight, represented by counsel. Probably wouldn't defer to them because, again, we are a party, but this is under the obligation of the authority. I think most of the parties to this agreement probably disagree with the intent of that language that we're hearing tonight. You know, we didn't draft this. I didn't draft this. We got it. We reviewed it. We made comments on it. But to go back from some of the early comments, I don't want to say a whole lot more, but the financing plan and the scheme of what the activities, the everything that we were going to do three and four years ago, you know, how much, we're approaching $150 million, but how much of it was done the way that schedule said? Not much. I mean, things have changed. Projects have changed. Everything else has changed. The idea of private investment in DRA, I'm not too sure that was ever intended to mean that that meant there was going to be private investment dollars out of the pockets of the master developer. I think they intended that no government money is going to go in and renovate. There's going to be a private investor do it. I'm not too sure that intended that that meant to be the master developer put the money into it. But other than that, I'm going to maybe sit back and listen to a couple of other attorneys to give their opinion as well. And I'm not sure who wants to go first.
Well, are you, as a city attorney, going to make a recommendation on this particular ordinance?
I think we did two weeks ago when we were here. I think at that time, I think we said that most of the questions that we had about the agreement, I think, had been resolved through other discussions with the parties. I think hadn't, opinion hadn't changed tonight from two weeks ago. I think we're okay with what's on the agenda tonight.
Any other questions, Mr. Danning?
No, sir.
Anyone else for Mr. Lanfer before we go any further?
If I may, just very, very briefly, I do think something has changed. You are informed. You are informed. That has changed. You may have been informed before, but now, my client and I know that you're informed. Number two, let me just say this about third-party beneficiary, and Mr. Harmon and I will not disagree about this. There is a paragraph in the first agreement, the existing agreement, that says there is no third-party beneficiary, but the introductory phrase to that paragraph says, "except as otherwise specified herein." And then it goes on. And I would submit to you that DRA is a third-party beneficiary to the master development agreement. But it is also irrespective of the master development agreement. It is a third-party beneficiary to the Master Development Services and Compensation Agreement. And there is no paragraph in that document that says there's no third-party beneficiary. I respectfully submit to you, and I know you're not a court, but you're interested in what the lawyers have to say about it, and I would submit to you that there is plenty of reason to believe that there's a third, that DRA is a third-party beneficiary to this agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Lanfer. What we're hearing from the other side? Could you please introduce yourself and who you represent on, so that everybody will know?
Okay, I'm Jamie Cox, and I represent Alliance Corporation, the master developer.
And your law firm is?
My law firm is Stites and Harbison out of Louisville. And my understanding of the changes proposed for the amended and restated master development agreement number two are the same as Mr. Harmon's in that, and I believe also Kevin Brooks. And that is that the original intent of the parties was as reflected in these changes. But with the dramatic financial crisis that we all experienced in 2008, some of the understandings and the assumptions that were included in that document became, there became a need to clarify those things. And unfortunately, that didn't happen for a while. Everyone was caught up in trying to make the project work, and as we can see, they've done a great job so far on that. And so we've gotten to this point where we're ready to get back to the document, make the clarifications, and make sure that it reads as everyone who's a party to the agreement agrees. As Mr. Harmon pointed out, unfortunately, the DRA is not a party to that agreement, and I agree also with Mr. Harmon that there is a paragraph at the end of the document which provides that no third-party beneficiaries can rely on that document. So although I understand the DRA's disappointment, there are a lot of people who've been disappointed by things that have happened as a result of the financial fallout since 2008, and unfortunately, it sounds like DRA is one of them. So what we would like to do is move forward with the amendments so that we can go ahead and clarify the intent of all the parties and keep on moving with this project, which is, which is doing great. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Does anyone have any questions from Ms. Cox? Thank you very much for your comments. An opportunity for us to ask anyone else questions or to be... Are you back again?
Am I pushing my luck? Well, I just wanted to, I just want to say a couple of things. And I respect the counsel's wish to speak on behalf of her client, just as I trust she respects my wish to speak on behalf of mine. I keep hearing, well, what we're trying to do is straighten out the intent of the parties. And that is, quite honestly, that's just really foreign to me when you're dealing with multimillion-dollar contracts and numerous lawyers as experienced as the lawyers working on this project. That frankly, just doesn't seem to hold water. But if that's what the commission wishes to pursue, to change course on its policy, then of course, it can. I would like to debunk the notion that there was no idea there'd be a financial crisis in June of 2008. I remember hearing our presidential candidates talk about the billions of dollars they wanted to invest to stimulate the economy. I'm sure all of us do. And notwithstanding, please be reminded that millions and millions and millions of dollars have been borrowed through bonds to finance what has happened up to this point in time. It is simply, to lean on a financial crisis that is just a few years old, our memories are longer than that, surely. And it's a crutch that simply does not work. In the parlance of contracts, parties either comply with its terms or they breach. And there are terms in this contract for unavoidable delays and force majeure, and none of them include economic issues. none of them include economic issues. None of them. So I would just respectfully ask you to consider those things when you reason whether or not it is prudent to move away from this agreement. And regardless of intent, I've showed you in black and white what the difference is in these two contracts, what the difference is, in black and white. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir? If you're going to talk about DRA.
Oh, no. I think I have an interesting perspective that might relate to DRA, certainly to the contract you all are considering tonight. And no PowerPoint, just pretty pictures. Dressed nice. Mr. Denny's wearing a tie, I thought I would. Just five minutes, I think I've got an interesting perspective that could.
We'll give you a couple of minutes.
Okay. I had some handouts that I wanted to give you, just my pretty pictures. My name is Butch Hutcherson, and I think an interesting perspective on this, I'm a private developer and maybe one of the only private development entities, well, certainly been involved since 2008 on the, on this project. We have a sub-developer agreement with the master developer that I really can't talk toward the contract that you have to vote on tonight, the merits of it. Our agreement is really more between the master developer and the TIF authority. And we still have some things to work out with them because of delays. So however you all vote tonight, we still have our issues to work out with the master developer and the TIF authority. But what I wanted to bring to the table, as an outside developer, when I come to a market looking for an investment, and Mayor Wilkinson, you and Commissioner Nash and Commissioner Denny were on the, were commissioners, Mayor, then Mayor Walker and Cheryl Blaine of the DRA were the ones that actually recruited me to look at historic downtown Bowling Green. And I liked the long-term plan that TIF became. I don't think it was even an entity when we first started talking about it, but certainly by 2008, it was. But they sold me on the downtown redevelopment, historic downtown redevelopment plan. I got to know the Fountain Square merchants. Those of you who have not been to one of those meetings, they're outstanding. Mike Barron has done a great job of keeping the downtown merchants really well-organized, heavily promotion-oriented, and making the downtown thrive. But one of the important elements to me as a, my perspective as an outside developer, when I come to a market, first place I go to get information, demographics, what's going on, is generally to the Chamber of Commerce. You all have an outstanding Chamber of Commerce, but they do not address commercial retail issues. They led me to the DRA, Chamber led me to DRA, and they actually gave me more information and helped me with my, with my questions from an investor in the retail marketplace. I think one thing that's confusing has become the role of the Chamber with the DRA, with the Chapter 58, with the city, with the county, with the downtown merchants. To me, it's important, and to the clients I deal with, it's important. I've had two major clients that I've brought to town, and one of the first questions they ask is, what's the politics of this situation? Nobody wants to get involved in a political spitting match and stuff. Clients want to come to town, developers want to come to town, and not have to choose a side or not have to worry about, you know, how things go to make our investment pay off. And I think, again, I have attorneys that advise me, they said, dress well, be pleasant, hand out pretty pictures, but our dog isn't in this particular fight. You know, we've got, like I said, we've got to iron out some contractual things. So all that I want to say is, to me, it's important that we get all the sides working together. Again, it helps and it would help me and my recruitment of tenants to know that we've got the city, the county, the DRA, the TIF authority, the downtown merchants, all working toward the same thing. And I see and I feel and I sense a little bit of a split in that, and we need to get that back together, it would just help us all. Let me just do a quick thing on Heritage Green. Heritage Green is our project that's Block 4, it's two acres of it. We're planning a 134,000 square foot building. It's 26.8 million dollar building, four-story, with a four-story parking garage in it, about 28,000 square feet of gross leasable retail space. Projected retail sales, $6 million. Projected jobs, 200. We have about 20,000 square feet, I think it's down to 16, for office and 36 residential condos. Amenity, and we planned on the first, and we've talked with all the entities that have been mentioned, our project is going to be the upper scale, a landmark building, if you will. Our price points are higher, our rents are higher, our sales of condos are going to be higher. We planned it that way. Amenities in the building, rooftop garden with a walking path with a pet walk. We will have an indoor athletic facility for tenants and residents there. We'll have private parking for those people with condos that are there. Our project is projected, like I said, to do $6 million retail sales and to have over 200 jobs. And it should generate, according to the numbers I have, property tax, sales tax, business tax, and payroll tax, approximately a million, two, a year in tax revenues. One of the issues that I'd like to see, that's important to me, is that there be more private development projects in the TIF district and brought in. And I think all the parties here, the DRA is working on that, I think the master developer is working on that, I think the TIF authority is working on that. But that's something that I think can be important to make all of these things work. And I will, I will make one position challenge, if you will. I read in the contracts too, the unavoidable delays part. We started this thing in 2008. We, we had a contract extension last year that we're working on getting done. This has been a, I'm 65, I've lived through a lot of recessions. This has been an extended and unexpected one. We've had to redo our financial package twice. We now have it back in place and ready to go. If anybody knows a bank that's ready to come downtown, last thing I need for my financial package, so I'll do a little public recruiting here. Mr. Mayor, that's all that I have to say. If there's any questions, be glad to do it. I just hope this issue can be resolved to everybody's benefit, and we look forward to being a part of it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Does anybody have any discussion or questions?
Butch, no.
Okay, did you have questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
Gene, and I think you're the right person to ask this, if not, so tell me. With the agreement that is now in place with, with the master developer, has the master developer met the obligations under that, under those provisions? Do you know?
Well, again, I'll take this angle. As a city, we've, you know, the county created the authority. We appointed the authority by any local agreement to be our agent for this downtown. It was the authority that went out on the RFP, retained Alliance to do this. I have seen no indications that the authority is dissatisfied with what Alliance has done. It's hard for us to say, because we're not involved in day-to-day basis. We're not out there meeting with people and recruiting day-to-day like they are. I can't sit here and tell you, you know, I know the master developer's done this and this and this and this, because we're just not out there on day-to-day basis doing that. That's not what we're here for. But I've heard from the master developer, I've heard, at least from the authority, I don't think any, at least I've not heard, I'll let Kevin speak, but I've not heard any indications from them at all that they're dissatisfied with the, with the work that Alliance has done.
Do you have any more questions?
No, ma'am.
Doug Gorman, Chairman of Warren County Downtown Economic Development Authority.
Thank you for having me, Commissioner. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm going to keep it real brief, because I'm not going to address, I'm going to address a couple of things, though, and I'll keep my comments brief. Currently, we have no sub-developer agreement with Mr. Hutcherson. So I want to make sure we're on that. He is welcome to come to the authority and talk with things, but we have no sub-developer agreement in place right now. And since we have all the lawyers in the room, I'm sure all of them would like to make sure that we're legally bound, so I'd like to make sure that we're all on the same page there. About it, just a couple of things I just wanted to point out. The timing is curious to me about our lack of private investment in downtown. And that's a thing, and again, just to remind everyone, we had till December of 2014 to hit this $150 million, and we were going to do that two years early. And this week, and I know no one had any idea this was going on, we've been working on it for two and a half years, but this week, we have two separate projects, both of them approaching $20 million, both of them private development. So at $40 million of, I'm scratching my head of how much additional private investment needs to happen, but we are going to continue to look for that. We are, I just want to share with you, from our standpoint, the authority, we were, again, appointed, we have no interest in stepping on anyone's toes. We have one mission, and that is to develop the TIF. And some parts of the downtown are part of the TIF and some aren't. We can only do work in those boundaries of the TIF. And so far, again, there were some rocky road at first, but I appreciate everyone's efforts to continue to stay the course. I am proud of our master developer Alliance Corporation for the things that they've done, for the way that Mr. Gumm personally has stepped out in the line, and I appreciate his efforts for that. And I know I speak on behalf of the authority when I say I appreciate all the hard work of the city and everyone else that is involved. But again, our, I want to make sure everyone understands, we were requested by the city specifically to update all of these agreements. The agreements we are talking about, about Block 6, all refer to the master developer agreement, all the new agreements, and it is, that is what precipitated making all of these changes in order to make these, this deal happen. I want to point out, we'll talk about it later, but I appreciate having some guests here today, the Mills family that is going to transform downtown. They have not been, they've been interested for a long time, but they are movers and shakers, people who are going to make things happen, and I just appreciate them and their efforts, what they're going to do to bring down those 150 jobs to downtown Bowling Green. I'm happy to answer any questions, whatever. I appreciate everyone's hard work. It is not, I, if anyone knows me, they know the last thing I like is conflict. I don't like contentiousness. I am a business owner in this town. I'm a father in this town. And I'm a husband in this town. And just like everyone else in this room, we all want what's best for Bowling Green. So I, it's, from that standpoint, I'm always willing to see whatever options there are. But in these, in these situations, it is, we have to do what's in the best interest of the TIF, what's in the best interest of the city, and what's in the best interest of all the citizens. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them right now.
And I have any questions for Mr. Gorman?
Only one I would have, Doug, and it's something that Mr. Lanfear said, and you may agree or disagree with it. He said something about the master developer being able to walk away from obligations and the authority pick up whatever they were supposed to do. Do you know what he's referring to?
The only thing I can tell you is, the master developer, they have a variety of duties under that contract, but the most important one is to, and they're funded the same way as to get us to that $150 million threshold. In fact, we have kept their contract at $200 million. And so, you know, again, for the next 27 years, when this money is coming here after we hit the $150 million, that has been our number-one objective. And you can tell from the success that we've had, that is, that was a goal-oriented thing, and we have, we have completed that goal. So I, you know, I let Kevin speak to that, but I'm not aware of anything about walking away from, we have no intent, and Alliance Corporation has no intent either. And again, we can spend all day long, I just want to let everyone know in the room, we have 15 lawyers in here. And if everyone thinks that's the best thing for the future of this town, I'm amazed that we have this opinion on the therefore whereof and it. And we can say whatever we want under our breath, but I can tell you, this is not about a lawyer thing. It is about the two parties that have to do with this agreement, and that is the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, and the Warren County Downtown Economic Development Authority. I appreciate everyone's comments, but when they start, when people start to threaten using lawyers, things start to stop. That's all I can tell you. And I don't know what else to say, not from my standpoint. And this is nothing personal against the DRA. You're looking at someone who was a DRA board member years ago. I'm very familiar with what they've done in this town. But at the same time, I'm not here to defend whatever, I'm here to talk about this contract and what the differences are there. And the city has reviewed this contract, and it hasn't been rushed. It has been in the process of working. What we have to do is lawyer to lawyer for several months. And you're at the point of making that decision, and I just, I respectfully ask for us to move forward, not only that, but again, with this exciting development of Block 6.
I guess the issues with the contract and Ms. Cox had made the statement, understandings and assumptions in 2008, that's what's got us here. Understandings and assumptions, it would appear, instead of, or in lieu of, the contract language, that's, I guess that's where I'm having some problems understanding. In 2010, it was pulled. I don't know how has, how has things moved forward without, from the differences in the understanding and assumptions? How have things moved forward without a contractual agreement for how many years? I don't understand that.
We noted on, on all of those issues as it went along, sometimes those issues were, I won't say variance, but at a different method. For example, when we were anticipating TIF bonds and that market dried up, there was no opportunity to sell them, and there was no, really no such animal as new market tax credits in the form that we're talking here, which became a different vehicle for financing. And the contract didn't keep up with different opportunities to bring that financing to bear.
The three of you, Joe and Bruce and Slim were here, and Melinda and I weren't. And that causes some issues. So the issues that, that Ms. Cox referred to as understanding and assumptions, the three of you all, and I don't know if this is proper, but the three of you all had those understanding and assumptions that are still in place today. I guess that's what I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'd say yes to, except for some concerns that some of us had, and it probably was me from day one, but I can't say in any kind of way that Alliance hasn't done what direction has been given even by us or others on paper. My concerns were where we started off. We started off with things going on towards the hill rather than down in the block where we are now. And Mr. Gumm said, he sits, he's sitting back there, and he knows that was my concern. And I have a lot of respect, as I mentioned earlier, for Mr. Gumm and David Butler. They, I used to work for them, worked for Alliance when we were building the Justice Center over here. So, you know, I guess when I scratch my head... So, you know, I, I guess when I scratch my head, I get confused as to whether some are saying, I will say that there are things going on that are not what is on page 12 or page 13. I can tell you this. If things stop, and I, I don't never agree with Doug Gorman on anything, never have, but if things stop, I think it's going to put our city in a world of trouble, especially when we have got already an international company that is home already, going to stay home, want to stay home, could be anywhere in the world during the same thing that they're doing. Boys and girls, we need to kind of look at the total picture, and I don't say that to make anybody mad. I just said because this is my home and I feel that way. We have got, we're the third largest city in, in the state of Kentucky, and that means that we're supposed to be different from those that are fourth, fifth, and so on. We don't try to keep up with Louisville. We don't try to keep up with Lexington, first and second-class cities, but we need to make sure that Bowling Green has all of those things that we need to make our city the third-class city that it is. And I don't know what I said, but I said it.
The issue, the issue, and I think we discussed a little bit this afternoon about what previous commissions do, and I've, I've dealt with this for not as long as you all have, but delved into it as much as I can. And if the three of you all believe the understanding and assumptions are the same, that weighs a lot with me, I have to tell you. And the city attorney or the city staff, again, their opinion weighs a lot with me too. But coming into this, I had no idea I was going to vote, just to be real candid with you, didn't have any idea, but this discussion has helped. Thank you.
Ask a question?
Sure.
If I'm out of line, just tell me. There was a long outstanding for PBI, and there's a large segment of new market tax credits for several million dollars that are outstanding, and they wouldn't happen except for one particular item, is my understanding. Would you mind telling us what happened on that? If you don't want to, that's fine.
Well, I, I mean, I appreciate the opportunity. It's been a complicated thing. A lot of people, I'm sure.
You can't just go out and get money. Somebody's got to guarantee.
Well, you can't get money, and our Master Developer, when this project was getting going and then had the legs pulled out, our Master Developer is the one that identified a financing option, new market tax credits. One of the things about new market tax credits is it's a great financing vehicle to get things done. The disadvantage is someone has to personally guarantee it. The authority has no ability to guarantee those notes. Our Master Developer personally, that's why I think the world of him, our Master Developer is personally on the hook for $10 million. That, that is what he has personally invested in the downtown area.
So that kept the TIF going.
That kept the TIF going. That's the only way that we're on track to get to this $150 million. That is, and so those two notes there, again, the authority pays those notes, the one who is on the hook for those is our Master Developer. And that is, that is not, that is not an opinion as well. I'd be happy to show anyone the documents to support that. So it's, it's not, this isn't Doug Gorman saying that's what might have happened, so that's what did happen. It is not something we have, to be quite honest with you, publicly talked about.
It's not my business.
Because our Master Developer is a private man, and it's not crazy about us being up here right now, but since I'm asked the question, as, I'm telling you as the Chairman of the Authority, that's what happened. And so it does make a big difference. We, this would have stalled a long time ago if we had to wait for bonds to be sold with TIF revenues to pay for those, because there is such a thing as TIF bonds, according to people that actually sell bonds and the TIF attorneys. And so it's based on the revenue from the TIF, and when, if you're not going to hit that, no one, it's a risky thing if you have no chance to make the $150 million. It becomes less risky, obviously, when you're over the $150 million, because you do have a revenue stream. But back, several years back, we had no, no way to go out and get financing without those new market tax credits. And again, it's one caveat. We will give you these tax credits to use, but by the way, if they're not worth what they're supposed to be worth at the end of seven years, someone's paying for them, and that someone is Mr. Gumm.
Any other comments or questions?
Are we getting ready to take a vote?
Thinking about it.
Only to say that whomever, whomever said it, I think that it is, would benefit us all, obviously, if, if the building, 601 State Street, if something positive can happen with that building. And DRA still needs to be a big part, along with the Downtown Merchants Association, to have all of the district move forward, to have, even though the square is not in the TIF and all of those issues, it's important for all of that to move forward. And whatever mechanism that has, that has to be put in place to make that happen, I hope some minds greater than mine can do that and get that done sooner than later. So that's all I have.
Anyone else? Are we ready to vote? The question on the table is regarding voting on the amended Local Participation Agreement Number Three and amended restated Master Agreement Number Two to the WKU Gateway to Downtown Bowling Green Development Area. Any questions before we move on further? Yes, the yes vote is to accept what's been presented.
Second reading.
Second reading. This is a second reading. Anything else? Police caller on?
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Thank you all for coming. I'm sorry, it was a long evening. We have one more item on the agenda, Municipal Order 2012, Number 86.
Municipal Order of the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, approving the city's sublease of the parking garage currently being completed in Block 6 of the WKU Gateway to Downtown Bowling Green Tax Increment Financing District, approving the proposed project in Block 6 consisting of the construction of a wrap of a portion of the parking garage, approving amendments to the revenue sharing agreement, and authorizing the execution of all documents necessary to carry out these transactions.
Motion by Hill, second by Nash. Mr. Febo, do you want to take lead on this?
Yes, sure. At four o'clock, we had a sun shining of this complete issue. I think there was general consensus by you all to move forward with a vote tonight on the, the wrap development. There were presentations made by, by the developer, by Chapter 58, by staff. So it's your all call now.
Now.
Mr. Denning.
Your Honor, I'm sorry. I'll go back to some of my earlier questions of earlier years. This parking structure that is being built is a public parking structure. Am I right?
Yes.
Yes.
There are no assigned or leased spaces to anyone on earth in this parking garage.
Well, I'd like Kevin to speak too. Baseball team has guaranteed certain spaces. Skypack has guaranteed certain spaces for events, plus the, I think, a couple of the subleases with the tenants have guaranteed a certain number of spaces for the tenants as well. Other than that, that's all I can think of.
That is open to the public.
But baseball teams guarantee spaces. Skypack is 20 events.
20 events in a year's time. 150 spaces in 20 events.
But those are on a first-come, first-served basis. As soon as you get there, you can find a spot you can park.
For baseball and Skypack, my understanding, unless Skypack has some kind of priority party, I don't know about that, but, but they may have that. But otherwise, you're like, first come, pay you five bucks, special event fee, and you get in. There will be some dedicated spaces for the two tenants that have been identified so far. They do have, I think, some undedicated spots and then like 10 dedicated spots.
But it's an 800, 850-space garage too.
Now, this is a big garage.
It's got plenty of spaces. Just want to make sure.
Okay.
Anything else? No.
Can we go vote?
No, I'm going to, I'm looking to, did you have any comments or questions?
I have some comments before we go vote.
Well, one, one comment real quick for you all, sorry for making yours. We did, in between the meetings, we did get another draft of the sub-developer agreement with the notice language in lieu of the approval language. We may have one tweak to do in that section, but that's, I think the language they gave us was fine, so we'll make that change sometime tomorrow, and we'll have that document final.
Anyone else?
I just want to say, I've always felt like part of the city's obligation is not only to recruit businesses, but to retain the businesses we have, and I think this is a great example. As mentioned earlier, they could locate anywhere in the world, and they've chosen to stay in our town, and I appreciate that.
You're up.
I too echo what Melinda said. I'm glad that you all are talking about hits sense and you're all staying in Bowling Green. Obviously, that's important. However, I still believe that, and for those people who didn't see the earlier meaning, I've, I've had a chance to talk with the Millses, and this is no reflection upon them whatsoever, no reflection on anybody else that made the decision. I respect what the fellow board members have said, but I still don't think it's in the best interest of the city to risk our bond rating, to, to pass an ordinance that has so many unknowns at this time. So, but again, that being said, if it, if it passes, which I assume it's going to pass, I wish you the best of luck, but again, I just don't see me voting to put the city at risk for any more money than we already have in the ballpark. That's all I have.
Just, just as a reminder, it's, it's not a bond ordinance, it's a lease.
It's a lease. And the lease.
But the lease pays for the bond.
That the parking spaces in the garage have nothing to do with the car parking in the garage. It's, it's back bonding these, this, it is us putting our credit rating on the line, and again, I think it's setting bad precedent for us to do this, but we are at risk if things don't come about as it's been, been projected to, to come about. If they don't come about like that, then the city's going to pay money and that, and I don't think that we should do that. But that being said, if it passes, I'm, I'm definitely for Bowling Green moving ahead, but I think I have a responsibility to, for this position, not Bill Waltrip, but for this position, to not put the city at risk any, any more than what it already is out of a general fund.
All right. Anything else? Please caller on?
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
No.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. That's the final item on the agenda. We have closed session.
We're back.
There will be a vote.
And there will be a vote afterwards for the media, if they're wanting to stick around. And we'll ask that you, thank you for coming, and we'll clear the chamber for closed session. Okay, we return to open session to consider adding Municipal Order 2012, 87 to the agenda. I have a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Denning, second by Waltrip. Please caller on to add this to the agenda.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
And so now we'll consider Municipal Order 2012, Number 87.
Municipal Order of the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, requesting that the Kentucky Economic Development Finance Authority provide economic development grant funds for Project Lucky, an economic development project to locate in Bowling Green.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Waltrip, second by Nash. Mr. Febo, do you have any discussion to add to this?
No general comments, other than what we discussed is that we've been approached by the Chamber of Commerce to participate in incentive to bring new jobs to Bowling Green, which we always tried to do. There's a special program through KEDF that allows the state to make a grant available to a new company for infrastructure support. One of the requirements is that money be provided to the company with us being a conduit. It's no risk to us. We're just the administrative agent for the receipt of the money and pass through to, to the company. And the company is named Project Lucky.
Codename.
Codename.
I'll have another.
Yeah. So it, it's a great deal. We're going to hopefully bring in new jobs, provide a state grant, and all we have to do is say yes. Jeff will do the accounting, and there's no guarantee we'll get the grant, but we have to be, agreed to be a conduit.
Any discussion?
No.
Please, sir?
No.
Please caller on?
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?